The week of meeting, the meeting at 7:42. Need a motion? Second. All in favor? Lee, would you like to do the pledge?
To the God of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Robles.
Present.
Mr. Al Miranda.
Present.
Mr. Perioli.
Here.
Mr. Rabel.
Present.
Mrs. Kennedy.
Present.
Mrs. Adams.
Present.
Mr. Anucci.
Present.
Mrs. Donnelly.
Present.
Mrs. Kancy.
Present.
Mr. Millman.
Present.
Mr. Guinness.
Present.
Was there any changes in you? Moving on to the total of the minutes for March 22, 2016, a Monday Sujin Budget Meeting. I need a motion in a second. No motion? Second. Three seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving over to accommodations in the education department. Okay, I need a motion for the minutes of March 30, 2016, special meeting. No motion? Okay, so then the, you can wait. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we move over to accommodations in the education department.
All right, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Jones to talk to us a little bit about the Iron Chef. It was, I got to eat some of it, because you guys were good. It was really good food. So I'm going to let her talk to you a little bit about it, and then we'll go to the accommodations. All right?
Well, this is for the second annual, we joined Iron Chef competition. This year, since I'm in both the middle school and high school, I did a high school team put together and a middle school team. It was in March. The teams had to get together and create a recipe that was, they gave us guidelines. It was, the competition is sponsored by Whole Foods and Cornell Cooperative Extension. So they give guidelines and the recipes that the kids had to come up with. The middle school had to do a breakfast item that would also be able to be made in school cafeterias, was to be healthy. The high school kids had to do a lunch item, and they got a mystery ingredient when we got there. So just like the TV shows, like, you know, the Iron Chef. We practiced for about three weeks before the event and after school, twice a week. We came up with the recipe, we tried it, it was needed to have the change tweaked. We put it together. The day of the event, the middle schoolers went first in the morning, and they did great. They made a southwest breakfast quesadilla. CJ made his grandmother's famous cheese sauce. They did a great job. They got second place out of 15 teams in the whole competition. And then the high schoolers went and they made a veggie burger. All the entries had to be no meat involved, vegetarian. So we made a black bean veggie burger, which was delicious. They got the best presentation, the crowd pleaser, and the third place award, which is nothing to, you know. It's very exciting. There's a lot of schools, a lot of sponsors that are there. The kids get to practice, get time in our kitchens in the schools. And then the day of the event, it is intense, right? There's a lot of energy, it's nerve wracking. I, as the coach, can't be with them. So when they got the mango, they had to figure out how to peel the mango and how they're going to incorporate it, and they did a great job. But a lot, it's a lot of fun. They were not here.
So can I ask a question? Is it like four ingredients that you always have for everything, or you just get?
That's a good question. There is a pantry, so they give you a pantry list that when you get there, the kids have to go and get. So that would be like butter, salt, pepper, whatever. Oils, milk, eggs. And then you're limited to five main ingredients that you have to choose. And they do give you, and thank you for bringing this up too. It is also sponsored by the USDA, so there's a whole USDA food list, and your ingredients are supposed to be found down there. The kids are supposed to know, and they did. They spoke about locally grown ingredients. It also is emphasizing the whole farm-to-table and sustainability. That's really the big push behind this. But we had more fun with the competition, so. Bye-bye. So there is a list of ingredients.
So all I want to know is how many of you have ever had a burger before, before you cooked one? All my high school chefs. You'd had one before? And would you eat one now, all of you who would never have one before? Now that you've made them?
Yeah.
So you've learned something different, something new that you can taste and like. How about you middle schoolers? Would you have had a quesadilla?
Right, well, talking about the vegetables, right? In the quesadilla, we had peppers and onions and broccoli. And Vanessa back, I don't eat vegetables, but then she wound up eating all the quesadillas. All right, Cassidy and Tomas. CJ Ryder. And then, right, and Abby Francis and Liz Ben. So Zingo, I love her last name.
I'm taking a roll with Mr. Mania.
Well, this one is for you.
Oh!
So, and I have to tell you, your passion for cooking and for Family Food Science Education, the fact that you're part of one of the committees that's really shaping the district, I really have to thank you, because what you've done with these kids and bringing them to the competition is just over and above what you do every day, and what you bring to school every day is your love. And I just want to thank you so much for that.
Then we have the high school team, and again, some of them cannot make it tonight. Kids are just so busy these days. Eva Betavigna. Eva and Pat Eva on the team last year, so this is their second year. Sarah Jebelinski. Gianna Buzzo. Jackie Russo. And then I have three students who could not make it. Jason worked on putting together the recipe. He couldn't come to the dance, but he deserves work, or the credit. Erin Vance was on the team last year and this year, and she is at band practice for the trip to DC. And Jackie Smiley is not going tonight.
Do not see the library. Hey, hi, come on in! All right, so we have a whole bunch of students who participated in the Advanced Battle of the Books. So tell us a little bit about the Advanced Battle of the Books.
The Advanced Battle of Books is students from ninth through 12th grade, and they battle three pre-selected books from Suffolk County against, this year was 20 other libraries. We tied for fourth with an overall score of 49 out of 60. They read Legend by Marie Lu, The Last Dragon Slayer by Jasper Ford, and Amy and Roger's Epic Detour by Morgan Matson. And each round is 20 questions, and then we had a tiebreaker round, and we lost by two points, but we did really great, good. They did great. A lot of them are not here because they have fans.
Oh!
So we have three. We have Sabrina Ryder. Abigail Savitt. And Amanda Adair. And this was our team, the Goldfish and the Raisins, because that's their favorite snack.
All right, so your favorite book of the three, how to read?
Legend. Legend.
Okay, why? So I should read this one, obviously. So what was it about that made it exciting?
Well, as you said, it was really exciting. It's one of the point, one of the books where it has the story told from the local point of view, and that's always fun to read.
So are different chapters, different people speaking?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So are you the ones that read under the cover with your cellphone lighting up? No? Your parents are okay, that you read all the way through the night and all that kind of stuff? Yeah, no, my mom is going to go to bed, so I wish I could. So what's the full name of the book, so I can make sure that I read it? That's it, just Legend. All right. Well, thank you so much for doing this. Everybody look here. Thank you. Good job. Is Mrs. DePama Mabata here? I'm going to get it wrong, I'm so sorry. Say that again. So I got the coolest email sent to me a few weeks ago with your children's delightful artwork. So why don't you tell us about the artist you chose to base it all on, and then tell us how we got this way?
Okay, so the beginning of the school year, the eighth grade student studied the artist Chuck Close, who is still a living artist, who lives in New York. And he had an accident that left him paralyzed, and leaving him just minimal movement in his hands. And he still overcame this challenge and was able to paint, still is painting to this day. So I love studying this artist. He paints portraits. So it turned out that Mr. Berger, the eighth grade social studies teacher, has been bugging me for a few years to paint a mural of his favorite President Teddy Roosevelt. And this year, when we studied Chuck Close, I had a group of girls that were very enthusiastic about doing this project. So I'd say that the project is about my height. We won't say how short that is, but yeah. And they came in, these students, this was all outside of class, morning, almost every morning, there was at least one person, if not all, in my classroom, almost every lunch period. We started in October, and they just finished a few weeks ago. And that was really, probably in my 17 years teaching, this is the most dedicated group of students from start to end to finish, start this project, and so like all the way through. So I'm very proud of them. And it's on display now in front of Mr. Berger's room. We did not put it in his room, no, it's in the hallway for everyone to be able to enjoy. And I'm just so proud of them.
Oh, thank you. That's so exciting.
Kaylin Spiker. Rebecca Farrell. Brooke Andrekin. And Paige Ryan. I love to squeeze into other projects, my mornings are very boring now.
So no, this is on a campus, or what was it actually painted on?
It was painted on a giant, it doesn't need to know it's quit.
Okay. So it was mounted in the hallway for everybody to see forever and ever, so you're going to leave your legacy behind.
For your children.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the 12th grader, Robert, to come on up. Because I know I'm never going to get your name right, so I'm going to ask you to say your name as well.
Hi! My name is Robert, Robert Septerodum. I am here representing myself.
Robert has received the president's volunteer service support, and that's a pretty big deal. So he's going to tell us a little bit about what he did to deserve that service support, because it's really wonderful.
So in the fall of my 10th grade year, I started PACE, which is basically a project for American children's education. And it's located in San Marcos, Guatemala. So basically, in that grade, I wanted to do something not just for the kids in my community, but for kids international, on an international basis, for kids basically. So I got a connection in Guatemala, and I set up an educational component to their food business. So they were feeding children who were extremely malmarish, and I helped them build the educational component of that, where I donated tablets, I allowed for scholarships to be put in place, so three kids can attend high school, which is not like high school here, because they have public schools, basically it's all private, and they have to pay room and board, they have to go out of their way. So in this small village, I made, so the kids would have opportunities basically to get out of the system that was suppressing themselves, and they can do better than those before them.
I have a question. How did you raise the money to do all that?
Well, that's an important part of it. So after a certain period, I realized that I couldn't keep on asking people for money, because there's only so many times you can ask people out. So basically, I turned my house into like a doggy hotel. There's a site on the web called Dog Weekend, where people who don't have a board or don't have a family member to take care of the house for vacations, they basically look for a local board and go consider it. I take care of it.
So how many dogs would you have up to?
So far, in like two to three years, we've had over a thousand dog nights.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So what's the most amount of dogs you had in your house in one night?
I'd say like seven.
Wow.
Wow.
I raised $15,000.
Have you ever been to Guatemala to meet the people that you?
I have, yeah.
So tell us a little bit about it.
I went last summer with my dad. It was a lot more serious than I thought in my mind. There were small little things that we take for granted here. Like the teachers down there, I don't feel like they care about the students, because most teachers come from another town, where they have a better educational system. So they're just there for the paycheck. So like in Kanakwa, where we can go to a teacher after school and ask him, oh, they can't. I think my fondest memory there was just teaching math to a small girl, very, how different it was compared to what I had when I was a child.
Let's do one with the presidential word.
There you go. Yeah, that was a little more important than mine.
Thank you.
Our future's bright, in many different venues.
Okay. Oh, just you?
Just me.
Great, that's good, great. So what's switched going on in Kinnick's High School?
Okay, so this week, our club, Students Against Disruptive Decisions, they're holding like a spirit week to promote drug awareness. So each day, the same way we would during like homecoming week, everyone's wearing different attire, so today was going to be sock day. And they're going on the loudspeaker, and they're talking about drug awareness, and they're trying to reiterate like an alliance against it, so that's important. In two weeks, on the 21st of April, Ms. Carr is holding her annual literacy rollout. And then the day after, student government is sponsoring the talent show, which should be a success, as it's, yeah, it's getting bigger every single year.
What day is the talent show?
It's Friday, the 22nd.
April 22?
Yep. And then in the distant future, May 27, which is quite a while away, the Honor Society is holding Homes for Troops, which is going to be our second annual event. It's an event for veterans and current military members, Homes for Troops. It's a basketball tournament, it's coed teams, kids ninth through 12th grade, and we're going to try and raise money to give to a foundation for service honors.
So is there admission for this, and admission for the talent show?
It's free admission, but donations are accepted.
Rightly accepted?
Yeah.
Is there admission for the talent shows?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah, the teams pay me.
As good as that way you generate the funds to make donations?
It's like a racket system.
Are those large bands?
Yeah, exactly.
May.
In May. Oh, May, man. There you go.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss.
Okay, young students and future leaders, who I believe have the option. Thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
Really quick, it's got to be my teenager.
Well, what two, I'm sorry, new business?
The March 31 state aid runs came out, and at long last, the gap elimination adjustment has been fully restored. Not retroactive to when it started in 1011, but in its entirety for 1617. So that means we had to make adjustments to the revenue budget. So I'm going to go over with you, I'm building off of the last presentation. I'll show you how state aid has changed, and the tax levy cap calculation has not changed, because the state aid does not affect that calculation. So we've talked about these first two columns. We started out at the beginning of February, not plugging in what the appropriate fund balance would need to be to balance the budget. Then on February 27, we did fill in that amount, that our expenditures had 184 million and change. And now, what has happened since is on the new state aid runs, we had 2.1 million more in state aid, in large part due to the elimination of the gap elimination adjustment. There were some other minor changes too, for some of the state aid amounts which are expense driven, but primarily it's because of that restoration of that former reduction of state aid. So now we're up to 53 million in state aid. So we're keeping the budget at the 184 expenditure. We don't want to increase our expenditures, because we need to bring our expenditures down in line, like the controller had recommended. We need to start lowering that, so we certainly don't want to increase that, even with this late arrival of revenue. So the way that that has been offset is I looked at miscellaneous revenue, other miscellaneous revenue, it's called the second line. And we've always had it at 3.7. I look back a couple of years, 1314, it was 2.9. In 1415, it was 3.1. So I brought it down to 3.1, and the balance of the 2.1 extra in state aid, I offset by decreasing appropriate fund balance. This shows you what state aid was last year, 1516, according to the first runs we had, when we were putting our budget together, because we were putting that together long before March 31, when we finally have final numbers. And this is what the projected aid was at that point. Now you see that $2 million difference I told you about? And there's a slight change in the 1516 amount, because like I said, it's expense based. And there are some modifications that come in for special ed and some other things, but generally, that's the difference. We still have our ABPR. I had this lined up when I did the revenue presentation at the very beginning. We're still in negotiations with the union, Mr. Anucci and Mr. Millman are, to meet the deadline required, so that we are eligible for the state aid increase. This speaks to the deadline, that it needs to be signed, submitted by July 1, in order to meet the September 1 deadline. This is the tax levy cap calculation. It hasn't changed. This just shows the math that's on the controller's website, how the formula works out, just a little close up. And this is an explanation where the basic idea is that the levy can increase by more than 2%, but it's further limited to the allowable growth factor, which for this year was .12. There are some exceptions for the pension plan contribution rate increases. If they exceed 2%, then that would be an allowable exclusion, which would increase the allowable levy. That did not exist for this year, those rate changes. Those rate changes did not exceed 2%. So, there were no exclusions for them. There was an exclusion for the capital. This just runs through the math that's in the formula. You start out with the prior year levy. There's the tax-based growth factor, which is the amount of change in the assessed value in the entire district resulting from brick and mortar improvements. Then, you add in pilots, which are arrangements that the town has to entice businesses to come in to the town. So, they have a special taxation. There's the capital levy exclusion, which we did have a capital levy exclusion of 703,000. That's the difference between what our debt services, that's the principal interest we're paying in 1617, as compared to the building aid that we get. Here, you see the allowable levy growth factor of 0.12 of 8% backing out the pilots expected for 1617. And then, you come down to the levy limit before exclusions. You add in the capital levy exclusion and you come to the allowable levy limit, which is 120 million, 823,886 dollars. That's a 0.08% decrease over the prior year's levy. This is the budget calendar. So, here we are. I gave out the line by line, which has been modified to reflect some late staffing changes and projections of staffing. And we're looking ahead to the next meeting for the budget adoption. I wanted to draw your attention to the fact that in the budgets, did you all take a copy? You probably didn't help us there.
Sure.
Oh, thank you.
Is it same as two weeks ago for the most part?
No. For the most part, yes, except for.
Except what?
Except for.
Okay.
Building suspense here. There's a transfer to capital line. We've had transfers to capital in the past. This is at the bottom of the last page. We've had transfers to capital in past years, much smaller amounts than what you're seeing now. For 1617, partially enabled by the additional state aid that we have of 2.1 million, we have a transfer to capital line of 3.7 million. And that is because the current, the bonds which is rolling now, the 2014 bond. We've had bids come in and they're coming in significantly higher than what was estimated years ago, more years than we would have expected. Because if you remember, this one has been delayed by the slowdown of the approval process at state ed. That closes a whole extra year. So, there's a whole extra year of inflation built into that. And also, what happened in January or February 2015 was there was a energy, is it? Energy code compliance that was required, sort of similar to a retrofitting requirement. Like when you upgrade a building, you have to then bring everything up to code. Well, they enacted a new code, which increased the cost by a percentage as well. John, you do run through. I'm going to pull up your slide that explains the increases that you've seen as the bids have been opened.
Sure. So, as Ms. Tomlin is pointing out, last Thursday, we opened up the bids. In doing so, we had four separate bids. People are running foot tracks. They represented site work, which in this case represents paving, general contracting, which deals with all of the constructions such as ventilation tubes in OBMSS. Cabin tree, that's going to be done in production with new ventilators. The miscellaneous stuff. HVAC, which is a large scope of work that we're talking about, that represents three quarters of the scope of work and electrical. So, one of the things that must happen when you do a project of this size, it follows the WIC law. So, anything over 1.5 million dollars, you can't award everything to one contractor. You have to go out to multiple projects. As such, it creates a certain number of problems, the way the bids are, bids and sales are developed. If you look at the numbers I just gave you and you look at the basic fine contracts, and right above the tennis courts, we're over 14 million dollars. Based on our initial estimations, we're at 14.9 plus incidentals and everything else. It puts us right at the, right at the edge of being able to award this work. So, starting today, I met with the architect and the electrical contractor. Tomorrow, we're going to be meeting with the HVAC and the general rental contracting vendors. They have not been awarded any of the work at this point. We're still at the point of reviewing all of the work. We're hoping that there was a misunderstanding with the scope of work and that we can talk them down so that there's not as great as we need. But we're looking for some flexibility. In addition, when we started getting into the scope of work, it was recognized that things back in 2014 were not necessarily included. Ventilation, heating ventilation and air conditioning in the high school gymnasium, that was never considered in the scope of work at all. So, to address that, to address it properly, is approximately half billion dollars. Some of the other scope of works that's been discussed at great length since this project was approved in 2014 was the ventilation and lack of air conditioning in the middle school LGIs. Each one of those represents approximately a half billion dollars. That's the base bits. Those are the, those are the simple numbers. That doesn't deal with any of the alternates that were developed during my review of the project over the past year. Things such as the ceiling in the middle schools, the LGIs. There are ceilings that are, ceiling tiles are actually coming down. It was never developed as part of the scope of work. We need to do that as an alternate. Ceiling worked out in print. We still own print. We still have an application to paint the building. There's about 15 ceilings down there that are old spined ceilings, $40,000 worth of work. And the one, the Duffield, excuse me, idle hour gymnasium. There's a rubberized mat on the floor that has a crease in it that is potentially a tripping hazard. It's about $8,000 to do that.
Is that the one that we sold together?
For the last one. So, when you start looking at all this other work and everything else, and you apply it to all different things, the incidentals and everything else, it has, we're approximately 3.7 million shy of being able to address all the work as the work stands right now. Like I said, we're going to be negotiating this work over the next 48 hours. But as it stands now, for budgetary purposes, we're 3.7 shy. So, that's where the transfer of capital is being considered at this point.
So, now, the two middle schools, were actually, with the inflation system in the heart center, will be too hot? Will be too cold?
Multiple things. As part of the original scope of work, there was, there was control work that's tied to the VMS building that exists so that we can remote access and pre-temperature thresholds. So, that we have, we have it going on at a certain time prior to when it, as opposed to being reactionary when it's too cold, too hot, trying to do it on the fly. So, that's part of the work. There is no air conditioning in there as of now. So, because of the large group that's, that's in there, the heat that's generated, air conditioning is something that is not issued.
That's in, in the gym?
This is the other guy. That's what, that's what this is.
What about idle hour, the gym, lunchroom, is there? Can we just put in there?
That was not part of the initial scope.
But the only reason I even mention it is because the council opened that door back there. That's a safety regulation. But it's still a warm, hot door, something like that. We get it. We'll look at.
If, at this point, anything could be looked at, I mean, HVAC is a large scope of work, so we have the ability to look at it. But in the sense of the gymnasium, the high school, we start talking about the LGIs. We put real broad stroke numbers on here. We don't have bids. We don't know what the actual numbers are. So, we could, we could go forward and look at a lot of things. But that's part of the reason why on this bottom, when we do a budget vote in May, is also a capital reserve creation, a capital reserve, looking down the road for the next, next scope of work as well. So, this is trying to address the heat, the main heating ventilation issues district-wide in a very neutral manner. So, we're not addressing idle hour, we're more so we're addressing, you know, sick mode, local or anything else. But if we're doing something in OBMSS, we're doing it in the economy. So, we're trying to maintain parity across the board.
As far as the scope of work on the tennis courts, can you get into that a little bit?
Tennis courts, because it's a project that has been, not been able to, been addressed over the past several projects. It was expressed that it was necessary to move that up a little bit. That being said, we advertised for that work. The numbers came in substantially less than we were expecting, which was the only number at this point that we could say that to. But that work is already been awarded by the board recently. So, that work is slated to be again.
I'm not understanding that. But what's the scope of work? Are they going to do down a certain amount of inches or are you?
Sure. They're going to, the existing, the existing tennis courts will be completely minimal. We're going to excavate, I believe it's six inches as per the contract. We're going to be compacting to a certain, a certain confection amount. Come back with four inches of mastic and then come back with two inches of premium asphalt. And what was extremely exciting about the bid that month in particular is, the concern is always making sure, not only do we get the lowest, but we get the most effective contractor as well. The contractor who won that award is actually the contractor who's doing the tennis courts in Minnesota.
Oh. So, does it give a guarantee on the rest?
There is a guarantee. It's not above and beyond whatever they expect out of it. I believe it's two year. But they don't do anything beyond that just because of the nature of it.
So, after the two-year mark, so the president coming into a defiler or something to try to?
If required, but if everything is done properly, we shouldn't have any problems with any kind of brackets, you know, bracketing those services for the next 10 years.
I'm worried that OBMSS, because again, I see that bracketing for our ass.
Yep. Understood. And the contractors, they came in, did site surveys. They brought in, they brought in their own engineers to do confection, you know, testing. They should know what they're doing. If they're not looking at the secret reports and the environmental studies that are associated with that building, it's a shame of that. We can only specify, you know, we totally create specifications that are at or above standards and that's what, that's what we're doing.
And will you press on so we can see, want to see what?
Every single project that goes on capital-wise, if not total-wise, I will be able to understand.
Do you wish back, are we addressing the high school library in there? Are there some issues there? Talking about part of this HVAC, because that's a big issue.
When we talk about the high school, the one thing I can tell you for sure, there's about 12 or 14 unit ventilators that were slated to be replaced at the, at the high school. The one piece that is definitely slated building-wide in the high school is all controls. So, we have mechanical units. We have rooftop controls. In most cases, our problems reside with the controls. I believe the library is one of those locations that's where it's turn the air conditioning on. They literally go up onto the roof, throw the knife switch, turn it on. And they don't have a chance or an opportunity to use any of the temperature controls. That is being addressed.
Thank you.
Yep. All the questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Sharon.
All right. Over to policy. Lee and Nick. This is the second meeting. Okay, so, does anybody have any questions? So, I need a motion in the sergeant. I'll take it. Go in favor. Okay. Moving over to recommend action personnel matters. Oh, sorry. Excuse me. We're about to. Speedy safety program, early ground inspection and warning systems. So, I need a motion in second. Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we're moving over to fellow comments. Step up to the podium. Address the president only. You may address one or more topics at the time allotted. This question, the debate is strictly for budget questions. If all the budget questions are exhausted, then we can lead over to other questions. But we're taking budget questions first. President orange.
Question? This is a question. We have a second one. I just have a second.
I'm sorry. Sharon, what line was the change in this? Because I still see the 184 million.
Yes, I kept the total at the same amount.
Okay. So, what lines were changed? Just so I kind of know.
The very last line is there now is a mountain there.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Transfer to capital. And I reduced some of the contingency that was in the health insurance line.
That need function 906O?
Mm-hmm.
So, some of those were reduced?
Yes.
But I guess they didn't go down below their, the explanation.
The idea there is to bring the budget more in line with the actual expenses as per the controller's recommendation as well.
Excellent. Talked about that in the budget advisory.
We did. I was listening.
Thank you. Good. And that was the only ones on it?
There were some other staffing changes.
Oh, just tweaks?
With movement between, there was one person that wasn't included, who's, you know, working presently, so should have been included. And changes like that were additionally adjusted for in the 9,000 loads by pulling from contingency advance.
And your presentation regarding the revenue items you'll post?
Absolutely. Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Harry, I was wondering, do you have a recommendation from the VAC?
From the VAC? I was not given anything.
Okay. And I realize the state aid amount is, you know, it just changes a lot of things.
Well, that's the first time we saw it. I saw it and I think I'm the only one here from the VAC.
Right. So, it was new to the board and administration as well.
Yeah, I know. It's just last Friday, right?
But, yeah. So, you know, as soon as you have a recommendation, just.
Sure. I'll reach out to everybody.
Thanks so much.
Is there a deadline challenge? Because I think the next. You need to adopt, right? You adopt the budget. So, do you want to put a time limit on the, the?
Well, we had one. We had an agreed upon date, but do you need a little more time?
I think the agreed, agreed upon date was like two weeks ago.
Yeah, I didn't want to say it.
Which is kind of, no. Well, it's kind of hard to say that when things keep changing.
For us too.
Right. No, I know.
But then, we extended it to March 29.
Let me just make sure I understand the tax cap calculation.
Correct.
The tax, you will, in order to calculate the amount that you can raise the following year, you take what you raised the prior year, bump it up with your limit, add a couple of things maybe.
Perhaps.
And then, get the new number.
Correct.
Right. So, the 0.08% comes out to be 98?
98,000.
$1,000.
Correct.
And the argument, I'm sorry, the, what's the argument? The.
The thought process?
The thought process behind making it, keeping it 0.08 versus 0% was that the amount would be lost.
From the base. Because the top line is the prior year's tax levy.
So, the percent increases in future years will be based on $100,000.
Only once, gone twice, so, okay, moving on.
Dean, is that something that the...
Can you turn your microphone on, Nick?
The ELA directors can possibly look over, turn it on as much as you want, I'm going to turn it off. I don't think it's loud enough. And possibly look at, you know, ask the teachers whether or not there are things that they feel uncomfortable with as well, and get some feedback, so we can look at addressing some of those issues, because if this is the way many of the children are feeling, you know, I don't really think that that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to recommend action personnel matters, is anything in reservations? Yes, we do. I need a motion in a second. Motion?
Do we have a schedule one?
Yeah, we have schedule one. Reservation terminated, terminations. All right, my second emotion, all in favor? Sure.
Thank you.
Just curious, is there a... Special education, they all say personal, so, I guess we can't discuss that reason, but it seems like there's a lot, just curious, when I was looking through it, it seemed like there was a...
Generically, I can say it's not standard, it's unusual, but they will persuade it.
Yeah. It just seemed odd to me that that made...
I can't hear him, it's the same one, I can't hear.
There was a cause.
All in favor?
I was trying to go to the system, I was so mad.
Yeah, I agree, there was a, it looked like a pattern, definitely.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to schedule two, appointments and tenure, let's see, I guess we have some items at that?
Yes.
I need a motion?
Aye.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Right.
Sure.
Microphone, Lee, please.
Basically, what, we have the new salary schedule here, okay, was there an interview process that went on, or are these just teachers that, one teacher came in and...
No, if anything, the six weeks was still abiding by the interview process, with the exception of the one we discussed on the 30th, where there's a transition from a science teacher to another librarian, that's the candidate.
So these...
The other's older, the process.
The older process, how old are they enough candidates?
Except for Spanish, and we have two finals to go.
Okay, now, so my next question would be based on, okay, saying this person stays, am I talking about this person, a person, and there's only one candidate, and she's a lead replacement, and she understands for a year, let's say, now, when there is a job, if there's a job opening after that, how is this going to be handled?
The anticipated process is we do have a full-year lead replacement next year in Spanish, in one of the schools, and the director will be going through the entire process, where two people with lead replacements will be involved, and nothing guaranteed.
Okay, because we don't want to go back to the way it used to be, and if you're saying there's not our teachers out there, a teacher that maybe is not up to this, or our standing might get a position, that doesn't mean they're going to promise the position forever.
Exactly, and the long and short of it is, we usually attract more candidates when they know it's a full-year lead replacement.
Question on five A, Bob. Recommend that we really include the following teachers, additional point two teachers, I got basically with the six-period day that we discussed.
Yes, and what we're doing in the meantime is with the new sub-arrangement, we reposted all those positions, and hope getting this up to finish the rest of the year, so we don't have to pay that additional money.
How does that, my first question is, how many people are we covering there? I see like 100 names, so, they're confused as to actually exactly how many, what are we covering, we're each getting point two, so we're each getting a sixth period, how many people are involved in that?
Exactly, so for each open position, five teachers will cover that, because they're lower in secondary level, full-time, it is five classes, so for each five classes, that's approximately one teacher.
So how many do we have? We have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and one person's doing two periods?
No, what's probably happening is they're providing a type of coverage, it might mean either that they need somebody for that coverage, or they have a different arrangement, it would depend on the person specifically, but I can check that out.
But what does this mean to you, that that person's covering two periods?
I'd have to check into that, I don't believe that's the case, but let me check it through.
Well, that would equal 10 periods, right?
I know with one of the...
Is that why, covering two teachers?
Yeah, we normally don't do that, I'm going to have to check and see if they just couldn't come up with a tenth, or if they have a different arrangement.
And then how does that work as far as, you know, we're approving this, how does it work as far as, we find a replacement, that replacement is in place, does that affect immediately, does this automatically drop, or do we have...
As soon as the board approves a lead replacement, this is considered separate arrangement, and there's no guarantee that it could last. We're hoping that the new adjustment, the sub-rate might not affect many of us.
I have a motion on the table. All in favor? All right, so moving over to the audit report. Anybody have any questions? Or I need a motion? Motion? I'll second that, all in favor? All right, so moving over to the audit report. Anybody have any questions? Or I need a motion? Motion? I'll second that, all in favor? All right, so moving over to the audit report. Anybody have any questions? Or I need a motion? Motion? I'll second that, all in favor? All right, so moving over to consent agenda, I need a motion in a second, and then we can have a discussion. Motion? I'll second that. Does anybody have any questions regarding the items, one through E? I actually have a question. I was just looking at the budget transfer, special education, 88,000 dollars.
Yes, that's related to, related services and home services, some for existing students based on CSE recommendations, other based on new students that need some of the...
So do we budget appropriately this coming budget? Because I think this whole amount of state special education that we've contributed money's into that.
We hope that we have, we never know who's going to win in the long day, but we did budget differently.
The board extensions are just carrying forth what we had last year into issue for the budget cycle, those contractors are agreeing to continue that service?
Yes, if the person who engaged them, the director or whoever might be...
Right, yeah, I read them all.
Agree, so that they were satisfied, yes, same terms.
Yeah, we each went through...
A lot of them were yours, Mr....
Yes, a few of them, yeah, yeah.
So I have a question, the higher district comes to receive the ekonice, so is that something that the teacher or administrator sort out after, to give the donation? Is for the automated, automated program?
1,000 by 1000.
I'm not sure how we had that.
It's got four miles on it.
It was pushed anyway, right?
Of course, we're sitting here, four miles on it, so I'm sitting here for 10 years. No, I think, I think what it is, is actually a vehicle that is used for mechanical, you know... Yes, it was probably designated as GM, as a, as a, some sort of a vehicle thing, used as a prototype to show things, and then they're donating, when I was in high school, Honda, yeah, Honda, donated by Honda, it was a Honda vehicle.
So nobody knows how to...
It can't be driven, it can't be registered.
Right, right, exactly, it's only for...
It can only be used for services in shopping.
So nobody knows how this got on the agenda?
There's a letter that states the vehicle information, it was the Suffolk, somehow through Suffolk Community College, they arranged it, there's a program there that they have in conjunction with General Motors, so their, in their order, I'm wondering if they had it for the last 10 years, and they've gotten something new, because it's 10 years old and has four miles on it, so I'm thinking that they probably had it, and they're donating it to us, you know, but they have to, if you read the letter, it says they, you have to notify General Motors before you move it, you move it from, you know, if you had a shop at RMS, and we moved it from high school to RMS, because they're going to donate by here, so they know where it is.
Like talking to new people. It's still the same problem that's on a daily event in my life. So I need something to happen because I don't know what else to do. You know, and I'm working at the state level. I can't really do much at school level because it's not a school issue. It's a district issue. And our district needs to step up and scream some things that are coming at our children at young ages.
Thank you. Anyone else? Only one, it's gone twice, so can I move on?
Can I ask a question? Dean, is that something that the...
Turn your microphone on, Nick.
ELA directors can possibly look over, turn it on as soon as you want, I'm gonna turn them off. I think it's loud enough. And possibly look at, you know, ask the teachers whether or not there are things that they feel uncomfortable with as well. And get some feedback so we can look at addressing some of those issues because if this is the way many of the children are feeling, you know, I don't really think that that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to recommend that action personnel matters. There's anything in reservations, yes we do. I need a motion in a second. Motion.
Do we have schedule one?
Yeah, we have schedule one. Reservation terminated, terminations. All right, my second emotion, all in favor? Sure.
Thank you.
Just curious, is it very... Special education, they all say personal, so... Yes, we can't discuss that reason, but it seems like there's a lot. Just curious, when I was looking through it, it seemed like there's a...
Generically, I can say it's not standard, it's unusual, but it will persuade them.
Just seemed odd to me, but not many...
I can't hear him, he's with the same room, I can't hear.
There was a pause.
All in favor?
I was trying to go pause, it seemed like there was some...
Yeah, I agree, there was a pause. It looked like a pattern, definitely.
I...
Okay. We'll go to schedule two, appointments and tenure. Uh, let's see, I guess we have some items at night.
Yes.
I need a motion?
Oh yeah.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Right.
Sure.
Microphone Lee, please.
Basically, what, uh, we have the new schedule here. Okay, now, was there an interview process that went on? Or are these just teachers that, what teacher came in and...
No, if anything with the six weeks was still abiding about the interview process, with the exception of the one we discussed on the 30th, where there's a transition from a science teacher to another, that's the candidate.
So these...
The other's older, the process.
The older process, how were there enough candidates?
Except for, uh, Spanish, and we have, we have two finals to work on.
Okay, now, so my next question would be based on, uh, on saying this person stays. Am I talking about this person, a person? And there's only one candidate, and she's a leave replacement, and she understands for a year. Let's say, now, when there is a job, if there's a job opening after that, how is this going to be handled?
The anticipated process is we do have a full year leave replacement next year in Spanish in one of the schools. And the director will be going through the entire process. Where two people with leave replacements will be involved, not guaranteed by...
Okay, because we don't want to go back to the way it used to be. And if you're saying there's lots of teachers out there, a teacher that maybe is not... Our standard might get a position, that doesn't mean they're going to promise the position forever.
Exactly, and the long and short of it is, we usually attract more candidates when they know it's a full year leave replacement.
Question on five A, Bob. Recommend that we really include the following teachers, additional point to teachers. I got basically with the six period day that we discussed.
And what we're doing in the meantime is with the new sub-arrangement, we reposted all those positions in hope of getting us up to the fresh rest of the year, so we don't have to pay that additional money.
How does that, uh, first off, my first question is, how many people are we covering there? I see like one genies. So they're confused as to actually exactly how many.
Yeah, what's happening is...
What are we covering there? We're each getting point two, so we're each getting a sixth period.
Exactly, so for, for each open position, five teachers will cover that because they're lower than secondary level, full-time, it is five classes. So for each five classes, that's approximately one teacher.
So how many do we have? We have, let's see, one, two...
Covering two teachers.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and one person's doing two periods?
No, what's probably happened is they're providing a type of coverage. It might mean either that they need somebody for that coverage, or they have a more than arrangement. It would depend on the person's specific schedule, but I can check that out.
But what does this mean to you, that with that person's covering two periods?
I'd have to check into that, I don't believe that's the case, but let me check through it. Well, that would equal ten periods, right? Two to a teacher. I know with one of the, um...
Is that why, covering two teachers?
Yeah, we normally don't do that, but we're gonna have to check and see if they just couldn't come up with a tenth, or if they have a different arrangement.
And then how does that work as far as, you know, we're approving this, how does it work as far as we find a replacement, that replacement is in place, does that affect immediately, does it automatically drop?
As soon as the board approves a leave replacement, this is considered separate arrangements. And there's no guarantee that it could last. We're hoping that the new adjustment, the sub-rate might not affect many of us.
I have a motion on the table. All in favor? All right, so moving over to the audit report. Anybody have any questions? I need a motion. I'll second that, all in favor? All right, moving over to consent agenda, I need a motion in a second, and then we can have a discussion. Motion, I'll second that. Does anybody have any questions regarding the items, uh, one through E? I actually have a question. I was just looking at the budget transfer, special education, maybe $8,000.
Yes, related to, uh, related services and home services. Some for existing students based on CSE recommendations, other based on new students that need financial support.
So do we budget appropriately this coming, uh, budget? Because I think this whole amount of state special education that we've contributed money's into that.
We hope that we have. We never know who's going to win in the long day, but we did budget differently.
Did award extensions or just carrying forth what we had last year into issue for the budget cycle? Those contractors are going to continue that service?
Yes, if the person who engaged them, the director or whoever might be...
Right, yeah, I read them all.
Agree, so that they were satisfied, yes, same terms.
Yeah, we each went through it.
A lot of them were yours, Mr....
Yes, a few of them, yeah, yeah.
So I have a question, the higher district comes to receive the ecnuise. So is that something that the teacher or administrator sort of after, to give the donation? Is for the automated, uh, program?
$1,000, like, should be...
I'm not sure how we have that.
It's got four miles on it.
It was pushed anyway, right?
Of course, we're sitting here, four miles on it. So I'm sitting here for ten years, with four miles on it.
I think what it is, is actually a vehicle that is used for mechanical, you know...
Yes, it was probably designated as GM as a, as a, some sort of a vehicle thing, used as a prototype to show things, and then they're donating, when I was in high school, Honda, yeah Honda, donated, uh, Honda vehicle.
So nobody knows how to...
It can't be driven, it can't be registered.
Right, exactly, it's only for...
It can only be used for services in, um, shop.
So nobody knows how this got on the agenda?
Uh, there's a letter that states the vehicle information, with the subject, uh, somehow through Suffolk Community College, they arranged it, there's a program there that they have in conjunction with General Motors. So, um, their, uh, their order, I'm wondering if they had it for the last ten years, and they've gotten something new, because it's ten years old and has four miles on it. So I'm thinking that they probably had it, and they're donating it to us. You know, but they have to, if you read the letter, it says they, you have to notify General Motors before you move it. You move it from, you know, if you had a shop at RMS, and we moved it from high school to RMS, we're supposed to notify them, so they know where it is. So, um, I would imagine they had to go to General Motors to notify them that they were wanting to donate it to us. I would imagine it came from Suffolk Community College, but that's what the letter's from.
Yeah, I was just wanting to know who engaged in getting that, um, part, it's pretty cool.
And I was like, they called it, you know, can you do something?
You have to actually coach, I'm not going to coach.
I would like that expression, but...
I'm looking at the donation excessive form for the Connecticut High School district, in a blank form. So something was, uh, the donation applies with Connecticut High School official program. It rises a line, uh, donation as...
It's typed in.
It says General Supplies and Auction Program, it's up to $1,000.
Oh, okay.
That line is what they're doing. They eliminated the line that would have been there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they're doing, okay, okay, great, that's, so there's only one incentive, thank you. Thank you so much. After you accepted, okay, great. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Anybody else have any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're moving over to Board of Education Committees, any reports?
There were people there, exactly, some people that would really be of help. I know one person, um, that was there.
Microphone Lee, sorry.
I know someone that was there for that reason, and I think it's probably that. You see, the helping needs, uh, which is a plus. I'm also disappointed in the turnout, it's like disappointing, people realize, uh, that's not going to happen to them. I don't know if we start in middle school, maybe parents are more attentive, and what goes on. I don't know if that's the, I don't know what the right thing to do is.
I have to tell you, my daughter said that if they attended the, uh, the drug forum, that they would get a homework pass. So there was incentives given at the middle school to entice kids to come. So if you didn't go, you got a homework, you got a homework pass. So I can't even say that the middle school didn't market it. I got plenty of emails, I was over Facebook, I got robo calls. I'm not sure much more, how much more the district could have done to market this. I mean, the kids are coming home, you know, and homework free night.
Yeah, and honestly, I think a lot had to do with the weather last night. That was definitely a detriment to gathering the people there. But we did have a lot of parents at the end saying, you need to do this again. Because those of us who are here need to get the word out, how much we learned and how much we know now that we get number four. So, um, I know, um, Ms. Vanzini is working with Ms. Santo and Mr. Costa, who are a lot of life as brokers, are psychologists, are guides, counselors. And they're putting on a series of events. So, and I don't know if you want to speak about some of the other things that are upcoming, as far as that's concerned?
We're very excited about May 19th, where we have Chris Heron, um, former NBA player, coming to speak about his personal experiences with heroin. We are working with high school and middle school on different ways that we can motivate our students to attend. We are also going to some different schools and commit some different programs and to see how we can best bring them to the district, starting in fourth and fifth grade up to the high school next year.
Right. So again, are we going to do like the homework pass at the middle school and tie some kids to come?
We'll keep doing that, and if anyone has any other suggestions, we would be happy to listen to them.
Do you think we should do a Dewey thing? I mean, so much season, I always saw it, I still remember it, I saw it yesterday. I thought that was such a big impact. I mean, uh, I know, you know, I don't know what happened with related schools, but we just sent home at one time, and there were questions about it. I don't know the right answer, but there has to be a way that we could reach these parents at least one time, to entice them to come in, and I think this is, this is the best thing. So, uh, I don't think there was a force in us getting them, I think they copied them out here in the district.
We did. We, it was something that actually came out of the El Santos office last time, she was speaking to me about it. We were trying to brainstorm, because we had so many volunteers now last night. And, uh, John Sanger from SCPD, to our friends from YES, to all these different organizations that were there last night. And everyone's saying, is there a way to make this mandatory? Is there a way to mandate having parents come? Now, we thought about sixth grade orientation, we thought about, you know, ninth grade orientation, we thought about things like that, where you have parents who are there. Um, and, and maybe it's something that, that we do as, as a district. We say, you know what, it's really that important for you to see what could happen to your child. And so it's something that we're thinking about, it's something the task force, um, has discussed as well. So we're, we're absolutely open to figuring out how to get the message out to more people, because as you heard last night, it's a pandemic, you know. We had a mom who was absolutely brave. She has three children, two of which graduated from Connecticut High School, who, um, spoke from her heart about what her life was like because of, of drug abuse, because she has three addicted children, all addicted to different substances, and, uh, she's...
What was the common theme she was saying, like, the oldest one, oh, it's just a couple of drinks?
Yeah, she, she is, you know, she's, she's, she was just so brave and so honest. And what, why I'm bringing her up more than anything, is she's willing to run a parent-to-parent group called Parents-to-Parent Connection, um, right here in the chief's office. I don't know if you have the date, Monica, somewhere handy. But we're starting an anonymous list serve, and the email address is parent number two, parent@ccsdli.org. For anyone who's interested in coming and speaking to Lisa, um, speaking about things that are happening in your own home, speaking about things that you notice that are happening with your children, questions, just, just to make themselves be more aware of what's, what's going on out there. Uh, she was so brave, and, uh, she said to me at the end, we need to mandate this. Because there was about 150 people in the room, in a district that has 6,000 children, and, you know, 12,000 parents, 28,000 constituents, 150 is, is light, and, um... They may have. And so we need to, we need to get the message out that it's, it's a pandemic, and small little things impact children, go in children's brains, to the, to the aspect that they'll never get their brain cells back. Um, it was, it was scary, I mean, I know I was scared when I left. Um, and I think more people need to see, just smoking marijuana, before your, before the frontal lobes of your brain have finished developing, they'll never get their frontal lobes to develop. They will be arrested development when they start smoking marijuana. And if your frontal lobes don't actually completely mature until 21, 22 females, 23 to 25 for males. So if a child is experimenting at 11 or 12 or 17, they're never going to have their frontal lobe be mature. And those are the scary things that kids need to realize, you're changing your brain.
So you mentioned marijuana, so maybe it's on the OBs and things like that?
Yeah, what, what was great about the presentation was he had great research of each one of the major drugs that are, are being used out there and how it impacts your brain functioning. It was just unbelievable.
It's on YouTube, he's on YouTube, I searched him, I posted the link on Facebook. I mean, it's amazing, so. I would love to see the whole video though, with Lisa on there, as well as that, Dr. Volpe, I think his name is?
Dr. Volpe, we videoed the whole, the whole night, so we will get that on our website as soon as we can, because it's really, it's really powerful.
I think you'll get a lot of hits on that.
I hope so, and I really hope that Lisa's offer of having the parents' parent group is taken up by people, even if it's just to come to talk to her, you know, any information that she has. She said that she didn't know enough information when her first child was battling addiction. And she certainly didn't know enough when the second child's battling addiction. And now she has her third child, where she told you last night she put on a plane from his fourth, going rehab, and, you know, she's hopeful beyond hope, but, um, she learns every time she goes to a parent group, so she wants to get back to the community. So I hope people do take advantage of that. And I would be sending out a connect that email with that, right, for people to email to us, uh, to get more information.
Well, that's what I wanted to show us, uh, when she was saying about her older child. She said, it was just a couple of drinks, not a big deal. And, you know, some parents will see that, you're just seeing it having a couple of drinks, and then it's been told in his college years that his addiction became apparent. So when people say, oh, it's just a joint, or it's just a couple of years, especially in the high school times, they want, you know...
And I have to say, the scariest part to me was the, the percentage of marijuana that's laced with methamphetamines. Seventy percent of the marijuana today is laced with methamphetamines. Back in our day, it wasn't like that. I mean, people grew it in their backyard and then they smoked it. Now it's laced with methamphetamine, so you're hooked when you're smoking a joint, you're hooked on meth. Scary.
The Chris Heron presentation, that's at night for parents, that's for our community?
It's at seven o'clock in the evening.
Yeah, I've seen his presentation three times, and it's by far the best presentation I've ever seen. And while it's important for parents to see it, it's even more important for kids to see it. And you had them captive at school. I have them at my school, and I can only fit two classes in my auditorium. And then I did a live feed to smart boys in the classrooms for the ninth and 10th grades. So everybody saw them, uh, some didn't think about them.
Absolutely.
Were you there? Uh, May 19th, is that the date?
May 19th, yes.
Would you have this study for the evening?
Well, Monica, you may lose, you may lose, um, eighth graders, because it doesn't come nation day.
Well, he's just in high school, right, Kevin, he's coming, I probably can't wait to see that. Well, that's what happens when you have something in the evening. People are busy in the evening, you know, we have him in class, and if the cause is worthy of sacrificing instruction for an hour or two, I say you do it.
So, kind of, you're looking to ask?
He's real secure for the evening, he, um, for the remainder of the year, he's free book during the day. We did speak directly with his representative today, who's trying to free him off either during the day on the 19th or during the day on the 21st. But they're not coached up, they can maybe have no choice.
Well, if not, you can start the poll, thank you.
Post that.
We'll have to do that.
I would have to ask that question, we just received a press kit today.
Don't you ask. Share with our classes and, you know, pastors. He has a, he has a documentary called Unguarded, which is pretty much his story, which is out. It's on just a bit.
So why can't we make that a homework assignment for the middle school level, maybe the eighth graders? Make it a homework assignment. Have them watch the video with their parents and make it a homework assignment.
It's a great idea.
So now Lisa will be able to see, where does now have to watch it with my daughter, should we go?
You know, he's not cheap either, so you want as many people to see it.
Uh, yes, uh, it's an evening fee, if he were to speak during the day, that would be an additional.
I have five questions, so you know if they'll watch the tape at night.
Yep.
Uh, okay, moving over to Ms. Linda Adams. Well, we can speak at Board of Education.
We had, um, we were, a website recommendation.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And, um, we, uh, put together some interesting ideas and some thoughts, and, uh, we had sent a text, the public theory is coming to our next, we discussed those and see what we can do with, uh, some of the ideas that we wanted to come up with. It was very positive.
We want to make the, the website actually user-friendly and very actionable. So we're trying to put action buttons on top that most parents, if you go onto the website to grab some information, so calendar, uh, the, the, uh, the virtual backpack, all that kind of stuff would be there. Parent portal will be action buttons up top. So as soon as you open up, you see some kids for a change on our website, and then some action buttons. So it's, it's a great meeting.
What about, uh, we're talking about trying to get, uh, the space, real space, people can just sign into it? If you want to fill a room or book, book your bills?
That's, that's going to be a different piece of software that we have to add at the end.
Can be added?
It, it should, it should be able to be added, yeah. Okay, so basically, I have a lot of safe things to say, but I also was excited this weekend to be the master of ceremonies at the robotics tournament at Hofstra, the SBPLI First Robotics Tournament, towards this weekend. And all he's not here, even though...
Oh, he sent me, he sent me in a pile, did he call you?
He did, to say he wasn't coming tonight, and I should talk about robotics, which of course I was going to anyway. Um, our team did extremely well. Uh, they made it, they were actually chosen, they were ranked high enough at the end of the qualification matches, after two days of the event. So they, they, they match all day long on Friday and morning of Saturday. At the end of that, they were ranked number 12. And, um, the way they select for the afternoon, which is the semifinals, the quarterfinals, semifinals, and finals, is they select teams of three to compete together for the whole rest of the day. And when that happened, they actually got moved into, um, a captain chair. So they were the seventh, uh, match, match pair, um, in their alliance pairing. And, uh, so they actually beat the second-ranked team, um, and made it through the quarterfinals, and then got eliminated in the semifinals. So, uh, it was a great run, and it was a wonderful team to, to work with and cheer for. And next year, we need to fill this dance with a lot more red shirts, because we have a lot of people in our, in our community, and only a small amount turn out for things like that. And if you've never been, you have to go, because it's like the rock concert for robotics. Uh, the energy's high all day, and singing, dancing, and I do a lot of it, and flag waving and cheering, and it's, it's, it's so much fun, the kids are just, they're just so much fun to be around, so, um...
Oh yeah, well, he extended, thank you for your, um, coming.
It was a lot of fun, it was enjoyable, it was the first time I, I was able to attend. And it was definitely something very exciting. The kids are really into it, they're trying this job, a lot of working to it. Uh, they really, you know, you can see how much they care, and, you know, besides the fact that they have the competition all day, I found it very interesting how they formed the alliances at the end, and they really, you know, strategized as to how to compete with the other teams from other schools to, you know, move forward, and that was very interesting as well, so it was a lot of fun, it was a good day.
And you have to see it to believe it, because it's, I don't, if you have never been there, if you've not, it's electric. The, the energy's just unbelievable, so if you get a chance to see it, or even go on the SBPLI first, um, webpage, they actually put things up, but you have to see it to believe it, it's really so much fun.
They did dog tags, too, it would be 25 pushups.
Yeah, they did 25 pushups, I was quite impressed.
What?
And I thought his wife was going to kill him, but he, uh, he did 25 pushups.
Shoves, they already give you free dog tags.
That's a surprise, huh?
Right there on the floor in the classroom.
You go to the mall for two days.
That's why I couldn't make it today.
Okay, uh, moving on to administrators. Mr. Middleman.
Uh, we just completed one of our initiatives this year, which is our in-house teen field trips, uh, for our grades, called Lightened Up Challenge. Uh, the students become makers and electrical engineers and employ circuitry. It's a workshop that links their elementary electricity unit with opportunities to enhance both competition fluency, evidence-based science and writing, career awareness, and civic engagement. We're really excited. We'll look to expand the program to other grades next year, uh, as we go forward, it's the second time we have it. We had a, a group of our fifth grade teachers meet with our director of social studies, Mr. Brian Frank, as well as our elements of humanities chair, Mrs. Abraham, to review textbooks for our fifth grade social studies, um, in anticipation of adoption for the upcoming school year. That recommendation will be coming to the board, and we'll, uh, to, to review the books that were selected. We're very excited because we had our first Google Classroom pilot. We have about 400 students who are participating in our Google Classroom pilot. We have three teachers, um, Miss Stephanie Burns, Miss John Halloran, and Miss Jessica Cowan, who are our three pilot teachers. Each of their classrooms received a, about 30 pro books. And the difference is, is that we have our own Google domain. So all of the entire Google educational suite is available for our students, and, uh, they're currently going through that process with their students, using the online collaboration, using the sheet for phones, um, and being able to store information and sharing electronically. We're really excited about it, and I will keep you updated on that. This past Tuesday, we had our new teacher workshop, uh, another one of our monthly teacher workshops. This one was held, um, here in central office, and it was hosted by Elise Halloway and Lenny Abraham. And the focus was twofold, the first part dealt with questioning, and it's important, it's in the classroom, um, was towards to those higher-level questioning skills, the DOP3 levels. Um, and the second focus was on discussing what are some topics that they're interested in working about that we could present that would make the difference. So I want to thank the two of them very much.
Thank you. Uh, can I ask you a question, Dean? Because you know I like to put you on the spot. Uh, now that we know that regions, uh, are approaching very quickly, uh, what are we doing about the math and science?
You'll see that we have, uh, math for these classes that will...
Oh, it is on there tonight, okay. So, um, how many math and we science?
Uh, we haven't historically run science, uh, that's not something we've done here in the past. But if that's something we like, it's a little bit too, we can definitely explore that.
Well, I don't know, looking at, I don't have the data for me, but I know that the math, we definitely need that resource.
We are, we are running the math, uh, three levels.
So it's going to be algebra, geometry, and trig?
Algebra.
Algebra. That's right, and do you know when that's going to start, or how that's going to be implemented?
Uh, as soon as the approval happens, I'll, I'll send you all the schedules as they come.
So is it mandated for the children, the students to attend the, um...
Uh, I will check in how they're, I will, I will get back to you about how those, you know, schools.
Yeah, so it's an after-school, a during school?
After-school.
After-school, that's great. I'm happy about that, because I think it's something, uh, just looking at the, uh, the data last year, we definitely need that. And then going forward, we can do that for science?
We could definitely start exploring that, um, if we can see if there's time left in the school year, and we can see if there's...
Monica?
Monica. I'd love to stop to meet and to leave, and to the district, both CSC chairs and IP coordinators come and speak with parents about programs or any of the process, and what social education will we run next year. In addition to that, this weekend, the baby breaking, families plan at the high school, which is their state event where they raise money for scholarships. Uh, some of the benefiting special education students have programs as well. And that was a lot of fun, starting at eight o'clock on Saturday night, and then three a.m. Saturday morning. Students were awake and participating in activities.
They were.
Uh, we had a lot of staff participation, which we appreciated greatly, as well as Ms. Kennedy even cutting bakeable sides out in the morning. Thank you.
Kids were drinking, stuff they wanted to do. It was the quietest that I've ever, ever seen in a cafeteria.
And just like, oh.
Wait, come on, let's go.
I was gonna stop by, my daughter was sick, and I kept saying, should I go, should I go? I was gonna stop by around eleven o'clock, it sounded like, yeah.
My son did.
Yeah?
Um, and raised some money. He, they, he had a great time. They stayed up all night. I don't know what he originally thought. I don't know what any of the kids originally thought about staying all night. Why is this fun? I don't know. But he found out it's not fun next day.
No.
He went, he came home thinking, just gonna lay down for two hours, and it's gone before.
Yeah.
Stay there.
They kept us on like, on different activities, each room, different theme, there were obstacle courses, there was, uh, who's on this this anyway, there were skits. They had a full host of activities to carry everyone with them for the morning. I think I'm pretty tired of that. But they raised a lot of money. We thanked the two, um, coordinators that, that, uh, they're making, excuse me, they're breaking families, allowing traveling, and they, I, I think that the recent scholarship turned it out.
Oh, that, right. That's awesome.
Can you just share with the, of the, um, opt-out numbers, or what they presented to you this day?
Yes, the refusal numbers to date, um, will be two thousand twenty students who refused the assessments. Um, the eligible number of students who should be able to sit for the assessment will be two thousand seven hundred thirty-eight.
Possibly seventy-four percent, seventy-three point seven percent.
All right.
Are you still, are you on Board of Education yet?
Yes, we're, I'm now. I'm sorry, Monica, were you done? Just say, thank you. I overlooked you, but.
Good enough.
Chair, we, I think we got you covered.
Yes, thank you.
Real good?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, someone wrote it up tonight, I wrote it up a couple weeks ago, the homework situation, which is the duration of homework. Uh, when does that conversation begin, so we can?
Oh, we have policy. So that's something that we could look at in policy committee. I think I, I gave it to you folks, uh, when you asked me about it. I did bring it up in, um, Superintendent's Academy Cabinet. Uh, the next day, usually we have it right after the business meeting. Uh, we don't have it this month, because we're doing training at the end of the month. But it's something that we put out to all principals. We asked them what their belief system was. Uh, by and large, principals absolutely believe in the policy, which does minimize the amount of homework at different grade levels. And they also tell the, they'll tell every parent, at least every single principal around the table, the elementary's mostly, um, if it gets to the point where it's interfering with your child's life, put the books away and go let the beat children. Um, and they said, you know, but many parents would fall and say, it took us three hours to do that, and principally, it was never designed to take three hours. So it's something I think needs to be an overarching overview of the district, and we'll look for the district. And they think it's something that probably we should look first at the policy. Um, and maybe Dean can put together a committee of principals, teachers, and parents to look to see if there's something that we want to do to tweak that policy. I think it's a discussion at first, before you move on anything. Um, and, and I thought the policy was a pretty decent policy. It actually limits the time developmentally appropriately. Um, I don't know how many people follow that policy, in the middle school and high school especially. And I think the elementary principals were very much saying that, we always tell our parents, you know, twenty minutes this grade level, thirty minutes this grade level, but we're not sure if your child is sitting longer than others. So if your child is struggling on something, and it should have taken twenty minutes, and it's taking your child forty, and they're done, put a note on the bottom to the teacher, this, this was too much, and, and send it in. So that was definitely a discussion we had with the administrators.
I can tell my experience at Ossie, they, I remember getting open, you know, open house. They would always stress it, if you're a kindergarten, I don't wanna say ten minutes, you're first grade at twenty minutes. They said, if it's longer than that, close the book and write a note. And the teachers are really great about it. It's our job to teach your children, so if something that your child cannot do, we will take care of it. So Ossie would just make that.
Yeah, well, all the principals were very adamant that they have that conversation, at least elementary.
That's what I was gonna say. I think elementary, I, you know, I, I don't find a problem in elementary. But in middle school, high school, like even on a going on vacation, every week vacation, and kids are getting a lot of homework. You know, the weekend's a lot of homework, vacation's a lot of homework. Just, I, that's why I just started the conversation, let's, uh, I don't know, it's everywhere, everywhere.
Yeah, I think we should, because I think that's something.
A lot of people bring it up.
Yeah.
Um, the virtual backpack. I don't know if other people, you know, get into a lot of conversations. I, for one, I don't like it at all. A lot of people, uh, also don't like it, and there's, a lot of sport programs are saying that their program is suffering because of it, like football, wrestling, swimming. They say that their numbers, since they went to the virtual backpack, their numbers are decreasing. So is there any, uh, you know, what, you know, is that, what's the?
The virtual backpack, what's the, what's the, what's a virtual backpack of, of, of action? That's right, there, there are lots of.
But what if, can people like, that will never go on the computer, they'll live alone?
Does, does, does these communities also realize too that enrollment is down significantly over the last couple of years?
Yeah, maybe, uh, there's, there's definitely a correlation to the fact that they, the, the, you know, the, the paper is not allowed to be handed out, because it's an easier access to there. But that's a policy that a lot of districts are moving towards, is making things, the newspaper more online. I don't know what the answer is, because I've gotten those questions too, when I, when I. Two of these programs actually came to me, and they said, I don't see the problem with if they photocopy, they, it's their paper that they're using, and they bring it to the main office already, the distributed amounts for teachers, why it can't be handed out? They were told, no, it can't.
Because two years ago, the decision was made that that takes a lot of time away from teachers when they have to distribute it in their classrooms.
But they do, what, don't they do it once a?
No, they don't actually. They do.
I get a lot, I get a lot of papers sent out.
Do you? I get nothing.
I get a lot of papers.
Meaning what, work papers? Elementary, yeah, maybe elementary.
No, they don't. Uh, no, those are, that's all like about certain things.
Yeah, I know, I was told.
It's only supposed to be PTA, which is put in backpacks.
That, uh, through the operator, from the third day, um, they share schools that I have made copies. Uh, and I have to bring it to different schools, and then distribute it. So schools will do that?
It's getting less and less now.
I'm only telling you, my ISUP, so, I, one of the ISUP schools said that also, of course, not doing that. But, but it is a problem. It's a, you know, it's also a problem at this level, at our level. Because when we used to get paper, I believe that we, we took a little time to read what we had, we were able to go back to it, we were, we were able to absorb more, go back and forth. I don't necessarily think this is the best thing in the world. It's easy, it's convenient, but I don't think we're as thorough as we, we used to be because of it. And I understand what you're saying. It's the way of the world. We don't get, we don't hand out calendars anymore. I thought that was, you know, I thought when we took the calendars away from parents, that was a terrible thing. But, you know, save the trees.
There is a lot of waste to it, there's also a lot of time to it. Not every, not every organization, we want them bundled by the amount of classes, by the amount of teachers. They had them bundled by these clericals, put in teacher mailboxes. Teacher mailboxes needed to be taken and put back into kids' mailboxes. So there was, the, the principles asked for something that would, um, that would decrease that time, and it did decrease that time. I have had many meetings. We've, we've changed the policy slightly, because, um, at the beginning, there was no notification to the parents of the things that were being put in the backpack. And I had a meeting with multiple heads of organizations, and they said, help me, help me, that we're moving into the twenty-first century, we're not handing out paper anymore. How do I, what, what kind of ideas do you have? Um, and they said, could you send an email home? And we do that now. And once a week, you get an email of all, everything that's in the backpack. Um, and so, you know, parents are getting multiple notifications also from their, their principals sometimes when things get put, put in the backpack. Um, beyond going back to paper for everyone, which is tons and tons of paper a year, and lots of lost time of clerical and teachers, I don't know what else we could do. So if you can tell me what else you think would work, I, I'm, we're willing to try anything. We went to that every week, connect in, that tells everybody, these are the things that are in the backpack. You click on the link, and it actually takes you right to the backpack, and that's why the first upper-left button would be the virtual backpack on our new website, because right now it's kind of buried.
I know, when I was new to the district a few years ago, my kids wanted to play soccer. So I just went to the parents', hey, let's go over soccer, and the parents knew, and they told, okay, son, it's age on, or whatever it is. So the parents would have their own network of sharing that information. So I was a new parent, I didn't get a flyer. So if your kid wants to play a sport, they're gonna ask, they're gonna ask.
I think our kids are spread kind of thin right now, too. I think that you're, you're seeing this decline in organizations like this across Long Island, and not just in, in Connecticut, and not just related to virtual backpacks. I think it has to do with parents being very choosy now about certain, certain things that they're gonna put their kids in. It's, it's, it's really a cross.
It's a difficult one, too, and a couple of parents are saying that I just declined in that, because nobody wants the cushions and injuries.
Might this, or we have our online sales we hand out, is that maybe we can limit it to the first Friday of the month? Uh, I, because I can tell you right now, listen, I, I understand that I'm gonna waste time, but I had it on my classroom. It takes twenty seconds, and we have, he had it to a kid, and the kid hands it out. I mean, it's not, that's, that to me is.
If you do it, what do you gotta do for everything?
I'm not saying it not, but that to me is, I understand if you want to move to, if you want to move to digital, I get that. To me, the, the piece of that it takes all this time is a bit of an excuse. I hand out probably, I don't know, I'll say twenty different flyers throughout the year. So you're talking one every two weeks, so I don't know, maybe there's a way to limit it, so that they have to be handed in, they have to be, we have to make sure it's mandated, whatever, you know, we want them bundled, whatever it is, and it has to be done, you know, by the first.
If you look at our virtual backpack, it's a lot more than twenty.
Oh, no, I realize that. There's a lot more notifications. But how many of them are gonna want them to go home that, that's all? I don't know, that's, I don't know what the answer is. I really don't. I just don't, the, the, to me, the time factor is, I mean, it's an issue. I get it, there is a little bit of time involved, I just don't.
And there's waste, there's a lot of waste.
Mr. Middleman. That's their reason, their thing.
Because it's different space.
It's theirs, yes.
David Tree.
Mr. Middleman, questions about our modules? Here, can I quote, we don't use the ELA module, correct?
We use portion one.
Oh, okay. Uh, what about the middle schools? Do they use the math modules?
Yes.
All right. Uh, are elementary, let's just talk elementary now, the math module, are they required to give the mid-module and the end-module test?
No.
They're not required?
We don't mandate that they give them, uh, we recommend as a practice that it's, it's good to support what's going on with the teaching, but we don't mandate.
And as, as of this year, I think we spoke about this, but I just want to make sure. Are teachers aware that, do they use, do you know if they use the modules as their sole curriculum to teach math? Or?
We're asking teachers to use it as their primary resource.
Their primary resource. Are they allowed to use other programs, other resources to?
They are allowed to supplement instruction.
So if they're not using the mid and end module, then they're making their own assessments?
They, we do have some real ones that are working collaboratively together to develop assessments. Currently with a fifth-grade project going on, where we're developing an assessment, benchmark assessment for our fifth-grade students, collaboratively in presentation.
Did you, uh, were you ever, did you ever hear this, that the modules, let's just talk about the math module, that when it was, um, when it was made, that it wasn't made to be a standalone math program? It was, it was made to be a supplemental program? Did anyone hear that?
No.
Yeah, that's what they're saying. The module was never made to.
The ELA modules were made, the EL, you know, the, the information that I have is that the ELA modules are, were never designed as a curriculum. They were individual units of instruction. Um, the math modules were a scope and sequence of the skills and ability and activities that kids should be doing during that period. So the ELA was not a curriculum. The math modules were a scope and sequence to.
Will we, uh, in the works to change anything about the math module next year, or no?
We are always looking to modify. Um, we are currently working, we've been working with our staff throughout the year, uh, both last year and this year. We have small groups of teachers that meet continuously throughout, uh, the school year to provide that feedback of what items are working, what items aren't working, what modifications we should make. Um, and we're gonna continue to work on, on reevaluating those modules as we do for the summer again.
What about teaching?
Thank you.
Do math teachers that we brought in, do supplement, is it, you know?
The math specialists? Yes, we use a program called Do the Math Now. Uh, we're finding some great results. Um, we're, you know, as the year goes on, if we're finding or identifying topics that are having great difficulty with students, fractions, um, that would be their sole focus, is the students who fall below grade level and be part of the math operations.
How many students that fall below grade level are utilizing these teachers?
I can get you that information. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? All good? Okay, we'll move over to our second, the second public comment of the night. Same rules apply, settle to the podium. If you rest before president only, you may address one more topic since time allotted. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, final position, grade, or building. Proceed, please, according to your left and right hand.
I'm looking to suggest that the sports people, um, reach out to the PTAs and flag them, and then, once a month, they can have those flyers. Is that helpful for them?
That's an idea. That's a very good idea, Debra. Very good.
Um, the other thing was, I don't believe for one minute it has to do with the flyers as far as sports. Um, you know, I haven't optioned in, I've been in soccer nineteen years. And in the beginning, it must have been sixty teams. I think there are ninety now. You know, the same thing with the class, my boys were on the stick. We have teams calling and saying, you know, just friends that know her, and, um, like, she'd be interested in playing. You know, if he plays to make a team, or whatever. So it's, I think it's, um, it's just what's going on here, and it's a lot, and it's just not enough time, and I don't know, so.
Thank you, Debra. Does anybody else have any other questions? One, two, twice? Sold. All right. I guess we're moving into executive session. Might take a five-minute recess. Uh, motion for Board of Education, who would take that question in accordance with open meetings floor. Section one of FICA, if I'm industry particular person, confidential, and exec who opened to the meetings floor. But we don't have the attorney here. Thanks, everyone, for coming. I need a motion, a second.
Motion.
Okay.
Have a good night, Ash.
Night.
I don't think so.